Good evening. It's seven fourteen. Sorry, we're running a little late here tonight. All the selectmen are present. And we'll start by transferring warrant three, three A, four, four A, five, five A, six, and six A.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Okay, we have three meeting minutes to approve, February twenty-eighth, June thirteenth, and June twenty-seventh of two thousand and eleven. If there's no questions, we'll take them all up at once.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. So why do we, why do we? Okay.
Yeah, so what, I'm looking at the date realizing I wasn't on the board at the time, so I want to make sure. Didn't come on until April.
Okay, why don't we?
Apologize.
Just add a motion just in that one.
As long as the record reflects.
She's abstaining on the twenty-eighth. Okay, so that's unanimous with the February twenty-eighth meeting, Selectman O'Connell, abstained. Okay, our first appointment was Joseph T. Keys, Esquire Lockett and Keys, P.C., on behalf of Oliveria Enterprises, Inc., doing business at Fakachas Restaurant, request to obtain an entertainment license, common victual license, and pledge of alcohol license for property located at Two Lowell Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back again, just had a couple of other finer items to clean up to keep moving along with the license transfer. Everything's pretty much self-explanatory, just believe everybody's already approved. All the other boards have already approved everything and given a positive recommendation. That's really all I have for this evening, unless you have any questions.
Is there any recommendations from?
With regard to the entertainment license, the chief has reviewed and recommends approval, and there are no issues from a building inspector or zoning point of view. So there's no objection, Mr. Chairman, continues the license that has been in place at Fakachas.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Just, it's my understanding that with regard to the entertainment, everything's going to be the same operation as it has been.
That's correct. We're not looking to add any bigger groups or anything else like that. It's just everything's going to be running as just as exactly the way it is now.
With that clarification, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to grant the request.
A second. Did Judy, you have a question?
Just a quick question in the sense that I'm sure that everything's in order. On the different applications, it references liability insurance binder. Can you just, just for a point of public knowledge, that all the necessary liability insurance is in place that's required by the state?
It is. It's currently under the current owner's name, under Fakacha, Inc., and upon the actual sale of the business. Kind of doing this in two stages, want to make sure that all of these licenses get in place first. Once we have a positive recommendation back from the state, we'll go ahead and actually finish the closing, and at that point, we'll transfer all over the insurance liability to the new owner, and that'll all be filed here. I'll update Wendy at the office with all of that information.
Perfect, thank you.
Just seeing a few different people out in the audience, is there anybody that's here to speak on this issue or have any questions or concerns? Okay, so we have a motion made, the second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
That was just for the, that was just for the entertainment license, right?
Okay, okay. Sorry.
No, that was the entertainment license.
Okay.
Chairman, the next issue would be the common victual license, and in terms of recommendations, the health director recommends approval, and the building inspector, again, finds no issues with regard to zoning or building inspection.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion on the victuals license?
I'd make a motion that we grant the common victual license to Two Lowell Street.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, the pledge of license? Pledge of alcohol license for property located at Two Lowell Street?
I don't know if this, if Attorney Keys wants to explain this. The board at its last meeting voted to transfer the alcohol license to the, to Olivera Enterprises, the license that was held at Fakachas. And then when we sent the material on to the A B C C, they noted that there should have also been a vote on the pledge, pledge of license, so.
Yeah, there was a communications mistake there. You know, if you go to the A B C C website, it's not all that clear as far as, if you look at the actual transfer paperwork, it doesn't point you to the right direction to also pull that paperwork. He, the person at the A B C C had called me last week, mentioned that he was missing that paperwork, and Wendy helped me get it in for this meeting. It was just, it's a oversight on my part from last meeting, and I apologize for that. Should have been in there, and it just, it wasn't.
So basically, this is just a house, house cleaning issue?
Yeah, essentially, whenever, whenever you pledge your license as part of a mortgage agreement with, with a bank or the other owner, in this, this case, we're taking back, the owner's taking back private financing. Part of that is they're secure, they want to secure the license with the mortgage, and therefore, it triggered this paperwork that we needed to file.
Okay.
I would just note, although the specific form that's being referenced may not have been included, that I do recall there was a full disclosure of the pledge at the time of the application.
Everything was already in the mortgage and the note agreement and everything else the first times. All the paperwork in front of you tonight is essentially a new cover sheet, the, the application, and then all of the documents that I provided to the board last meeting.
Okay. Any more questions, comments, or a motion?
Do I have that back? I'll write it down.
I would move to approve the pledge of license for Olivera Enterprises.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next appointment was Thomas W. Fathergill, Esquire, on behalf of Nimsha P. Patel and Perish K. Patel, Average, LLC, for public hearing request to transfer of all alcohol license of Colonial Park Liquors, Inc., to Average, LLC, doing, doing business as Colonial Park Liquors, and property located at thirty-five Lowell Street, number nine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're just going to try our best.
We did get a call that, that he was stuck on ninety-three and would not likely be here at seven-ten. I don't know if you want to consider tabling until he gets here or unless the applicants want to go forward without him. That's up to you, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Do they have the green? They would need the green.
I think we received that, we received those actually today.
Okay. Unless anybody has any objections?
I mean, I'm, I'd be happy to, if it's their preference, to move to table it, to get through some of our other business. If you prefer to wait for your attorney, or we can take it up now. Put it this way, we're not going to hold it against you if you ask us to wait a short amount of time.
We can wait, like, he's coming, so we can just wait for him.
Okay. Based on that, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we table that until a point during the regular business meeting.
Okay. A second. Motion made second, all in favor to table? Unanimous? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next appointment was Joseph M. Gleason, Verizon, New England, Inc., for public hearing and request of Verizon, New England, Inc., and Reading Municipal Light Department to place two poles on Intervale Street, formerly known as Manning Street. Mr. Gleason, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joseph Gleason, I'm a right-of-way agent for Verizon, New England, Inc., office located twenty-eighth Diana Lane in Drakeett. The petition before you, Mr. Chairman, is a request Verizon and R.M.L.D. for the placement of two new poles along the westerly side of Intervale Street. These poles will be located, as shown on the plan, approximately ninety-six feet. First pole would be placed approximately ninety-six feet from the center line of Royal Street, again, on the westerly side of Intervale. The second pole would be placed approximately one hundred and eighty-one feet from the center line of Royal Street, again, on the westerly side. I'm advised that there is a new development going, going at this location. I was just out there tonight, there is a, there is a new street there, a little cul-de-sac, and I understand they'll be building some homes in that location. So these poles will be used to service the new homes at that location with telephone, electric, and whatever.
Okay. Questions, comments, or questions from the board?
Any comments from the audience?
I have a question. So, I mean, right next to it, can you sort, I, I can't imagine where, I also know where West needs is on the street. Can you sort of place exactly where?
Yeah, if you were standing on West Street, looking down the cul-de-sac, poles would be placed on the right-hand side of the road.
Okay, and how far out?
The first pole will be placed, as I said, about ninety-six feet from the center line of Royal Street, and the second pole will be one hundred and eighty-one feet down on the right-hand side, looking at it from Royal Street, again, on the right-hand side.
So you say one hundred and eighty-one feet, is that almost the end of the cul-de-sac?
I would suspect, I didn't wheel it off, it's a pretty short little road there. Like, I can't see it being significantly longer.
You have the map with you, if you want to show them the map.
Yeah, thank you. And then what's going to end up happening is, is they're going to service, after this pole existing here, eighty-two-four, they'll bring service in from here, and then bring it down the rest of the way.
The only other question is why couldn't we bury those instead of, like, place poles there?
Is that?
Do you? I don't know. We can answer that, but.
I'm sorry, before we walk, we just have your name.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name is Vince Pierre, here at Eight Oak Street. It's actually, if you can picture the map.
Well, I have a second pole, probably touch our property.
Yeah.
Okay.
The real street sort of touches the other side of the property.
Okay, and what was your question? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Why, why couldn't we bury the lines instead of making the poles?
Okay, that's a, that's a good question. And I'm going to have to beg a little bit ignorance on the history of Intervale Street, formerly known as Manning Road. Normally, when you'd see something like this, this would be a new subdivision built on private property, and what would usually happen in a case like this is, is that there would probably be some planning board requirement with new subdivisions, that all utilities be undergrounded. So, again, this is the ignorant, this was the ignorant part of my presentation of it. I don't really know the history of, of Intervale slash Manning Street. It looks like a new road to me, but it may have been somehow accepted by the town, because normally, I would just be going to the developer to secure easement rights for the placement of utilities. And as I said, if this were a new subdivision, a new street, more often than not, those utilities would be undergrounded.
Right.
Because I am here before you, my assumption is that this is not a private way, but a public street, and that as a result thereof, I think what Verizon is doing is, they are keeping the utility provisions in that area consistent with what's already out there. There are already other poles coming down Royal Street and servicing that other area. So what Verizon normally does, absent a planning board requirement for undergrounding, is they will keep the utilities in a consistent form. So if it's above ground, they'll keep it above ground; if it's below ground, they'd go below ground.
Okay.
But to answer the question specifically to this location, I don't really know. Again, I'm just assuming that it's because it's a public way, and because it's already existing above-ground facilities there, they're going to keep it above ground. And I, I think that if there was going to be a requirement to place it below ground, this would then start moving back upstream, if the town said, well, we want that underground, and we're going to go back to the developer, and says, well, the town is not going to allow us to place those poles, you're going to have to pay for the undergrounding. So it sort of moves back upstream at this point.
Okay, let me answer your question. Do you have any other questions? Questions or comments from the board?
I guess my only, from, from the abutter who is here, is it clear to you from a review of the plan where the poles could be located, and does it make sense to you as a, as somebody who's familiar with the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I would think so. Like, what I'm trying to picture is, my property touches up against that road, just trying to picture if that pole's going to be, I guess there's going to be a couple of feet where my property isn't where the road is, but.
Yeah, well, that's where we're normally going. This is, normally, it, again, if this is a public way, then what you have to do is you look at the public way, you look at the asphalt surface, and then the extent of the taking usually extends a couple of feet outside of, of the asphalt surface, and that's what's called part of the public taking, and that's what would be placing our poles. The one thing I, I will say, and I will be forthright, was, I didn't notice any stakes out there tonight, when I was out there looking at the location. I didn't see them, but, I'm saying they're not there, I just didn't see them. What we can do is, if they're not out there, I can have the engineer go out and stake the locations for the abutters. If that will help the situation, I don't know if you want to, need to come back at another hearing for this, or?
I mean, is that something we could put off?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any rush, just the road is in, I didn't see any buildings out there at this point. So, I mean, if, if you want, I'm more than happy to have the, the engineer go out, stake the locations, make sure the abutters are satisfied, and I can come back at another, another time.
I would put that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm of the mind, what we have an abutter who's voiced some concern. I had concerns about the fact that there's two poles, and certainly, I'm not, I don't know anything technologically about why, why necessary two poles versus one versus, versus whatever, and I thought the same thing, boy, that's interesting, this is new development. It seems like most of the new developments are getting underground utilities now. It, but I don't, I'm also sensitive, I don't want to thwart progress of the project if the project is waiting for our vote, but if it's not going to do that, then I would like, be really of the mind to.
Can I be honest with you? Verizon's on strike, they're not going to be placing any, any time soon.
Forget about that. Oh, yeah, in that case, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Till that, till that work stoppage is over, there's not going to be any pole placement, so there's really, they're not going to get any service out there at this point.
Okay. Having said that, any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd move to continue the hearing, and what, what date makes sense, do you think, to have time to stake it out, have your engineers?
I can be at the next meeting, I can have it done. The, the engineers who work this, they're not, they're not union members, they're all management, so they may be engaged in some work stoppage duties, but I don't think it'll be too difficult to get somebody out there to put a couple of stakes in the ground, so.
Then I, I move to continue the hearing until the next scheduled selectmen's meeting.
September twelfth.
On September twelfth, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go with the next appointment, Pepper Dining, Inc., doing business as Chili's Bar and Grill, request to change manager from Michael Cronin to Paul J. Lozinski. Good evening.
Evening. Can I come up here?
Sure.
Sure, sorry.
Okay, if you could just introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Paul Lozinski, I'm with Chili's in Wilmington, Crossland, down on Main Street, representing Pepper Dining.
And we have department recommendations?
The police department has reviewed the application to change managers from Michael Cronin to Mr. Lozinski, and after review investigation, he's found nothing that would cause any concern and would recommend approval of the change of managers.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion?
Just curious, what happened to the other manager?
He moved to our Burlington location, and I came up from Walpole.
Very good.
Well, thank you. Glad to be here.
Here you is the chairman.
Okay.
I move to approve the, the change of manager to Paul Lozinski. Did I say that right?
You sure did.
Pretty well.
Lot of consonants in there.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is a discussion for the ceremonies to commemorate the tenth anniversary of nine eleven, and working with the Council of Churches through Department of Veteran Services, we are planning some ceremonies for the actual day, September eleventh, which happens to be on a Sunday this year. There will be more advertising, I know it's the next, it's the day before our next selectmen's meeting, but we will be tentatively starting the ceremonies at three o'clock at St. Thomas Church, and it will be followed by a ceremony right on the common at four o'clock on the day, September eleventh. But that's just the basic, get the word out right now, correct, there's nothing else.
Yeah, we're working, as the chairman says, with Council of Churches, with the school department, and with the police department, and the fire department, and obviously, the veterans, and we would hope that people would, once they learn more about it, would come out and, and assist the town in commemorating that important date.
Any questions, any?
Do we have any families in town that we know of that had suffered any, any losses during that, that event? Do you know if there was like any firsthand, like, fathers, mothers, anything to that effect?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank God.
If you know, though.
Not specifically, I mean, we had a soldier that was killed in action in Iraq, joined after nine eleven, but not specifically of the, the action of that day.
The events of that day. Well, I, I mean, I think there was so much attention paid appropriately to the public safety, the fire and police officers, and so many others that came to the rescue during that time. Obviously, I, it would be appropriate, I'm sure, for us to involve our, our local public safety professionals, too, and I'm certain that we will be inviting them, but I hope that everyone in town will carve out some time to, to come out to this unfortunate celebration of this, this sad history, sad celebration.
Is your attorney here yet?
Not here, you can run without me, or?
Well, it's up to you, I mean, we could do some communications, still wait.
We wait so long for this, maybe so we don't want to.
Okay. That's fine, I mean, we could still wait a few more minutes and go through some communications here, if you want to wait for him.
If you want to wait, wait until the end, and then if he's not coming, then we do a bio.
Okay, very good, very good, okay.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Nice communication.
Sure. We have correspondent from Catherine Craven, the executive director of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which gives us the official approval to proceed to schematic design for the construction of the new high school. We spoke about this at our last meeting, advised the board that we were going forward with the presentation on July twenty-seventh, and this is a copy of a letter to Superintendent Benton approving the town's, proceed, approving the town to proceed into schematic design. They also voted to approve what was submitted, which would be the replacement of the Wilmington High School with the construction of a new high school on the existing site. So that certainly was, was good news that they have accepted the reams of documentation that have had to be presented for this, and we are now in the process of moving forward on that schematic design. The board also, in conjunction with that, has received approval from the Inspector General's Office to its application that was submitted to proceed to use a construction management at-risk alternative delivery method pursuant to state statute. The town was seeking approval to use this for the construction of a new high school, and based upon the information that we submitted, the Inspector General's Office has determined that the town has met the requirements necessary for using the C M at-risk delivery method, and issued this notice allowing us to proceed. We believe this makes the most sense for the town in terms of its construction, it also gains us additional points in terms of reimbursement from the MSBA, but more importantly, it gives us more control over who the construction manager will be. We no longer simply have to select, you know, the low bidder, we can, we are going through right now a process of interviews with firms that have submitted their qualifications, they've all had to be pre-qualified through D.C.A.M., and we're going through that process. I believe interviews have been already set up for the end of the month, where a recommendation will be made to select one of the construction management firms. Number of drivers to that decision, one was certainly, we wanted, because of the accelerated timetable, we wanted to have somebody on board as soon as possible, also because of the, the site itself, where it's a constrained site with another building coming down, it was very helpful to have a construction manager on, on site prior to any final design. And also with regard to being able to get the best budget and scope by having the construction manager on, you know, we'll be able to come up with a better, a better number in terms of the budget. So that was, that was good news for the town, that the Inspector General approved our request. I'll just continue, Mr. Chairman. You have a memorandum from me regarding House Bill three, four, five, five, the Act relative to the appointment of a town manager in the town of Wilmington, this was the residency requirement issue. You recall that at our annual town meeting on April thirtieth, voters approved Article twenty-six, which authorized a petition to the general court seeking enactment of special legislation to amend the charter of the town of Wilmington by eliminating the residency requirement for the position of town manager. As a result, the town's legislative delegation filed legislation which became known as House three, four, five, five. Members of the legislative delegation and I testified in favor of this bill on June fifteenth at the State House before the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. The bill was favorably reported by the committee. On July twenty-seventh of this year, the legislation was engrossed in the House of Representatives, meaning that it passed the House of Representatives, and it was delivered to the Senate for their action back on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. I indicated in this memorandum, which was sent to you obviously last week, that the Senate was expected to take action on the bill today, and in fact, they did, they took action, they voted in favor, and they also, meaning that they engrossed the legislation, and that it expects now, hopefully, to be enacted on Thursday. So after the legislation goes through each branch of the, of the legislature, it then goes back to both branches for final enactment, and we expect that that will happen on Thursday. And if it is voted in the affirmative, we have very expectation, given the prior votes, that it would be, then it would be sent to the governor's desk, and he would have ten days in which to act on the, on the legislation. If it's, if it's signed by the governor and becomes law, it then is subject to a vote of the general population here in the town of Wilmington, and would be done so at a referendum, presumably at the April town, the time of the April town meeting. So there's progress on that bill, very substantial progress.
Thank you. Looks like there are attorneys here.
I believe Attorney Fathergill is, is here.
Okay, entertain a motion to go back to seat top of Fathergill, Esquire, on behalf of Nimsha and Patel and Perish K. Patel, public hearing request to transfer all liquor, alcohol license, Colonial Park Liquors, Inc., to Average, LLC, doing business Colonial Park Liquors, for property located at thirty-five Lowell Street.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Unanimous? Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, again, I, uh.
How was traffic?
I thought I knew every shortcut through Wilmington. Unfortunately, my mother lives in the other end of town. Why don't you sit?
No, just standing, it's fine.
Okay, all right, you sure?
Bring the other chair if you need.
No, fine, thank you.
Do you want me to just, for sure?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, and again, I, my apologies for the, my delay here. It's quite a bit of traffic out there on every road right now, unfortunately. I'm here tonight with Perish Patel and Nimsha Patel, who are the, the, the two members, so they're the only members of Abiak LLC, which is petitioning this board for leave to transfer the liquor license, the package store license for Colonial Park Liquors on Lowell Street. They are purchasing, they, they have entered into a purchase agreement with the current owner, Colonial Park Liquors, Inc. The plan calls for them to purchase the assets of the business for a set price. There will be, it will be a cash transaction for the assets. The inventory will be priced at seventy-five percent of whatever the, the retail price is, and that, that aspect of the sale will be financed by the current owner. Mr. Patel has had experience in three other liquor stores, two in Methuen, one in Tewksbury. Ms. Patel has also worked in a package store, a few different package stores, approximately twenty hours a week, based, on a part-time basis. The lease assignment with the current landlord has already been approved. We're just waiting for the, the approval of this board, and obviously, the, the state to proceed with the, the transaction.
Okay. Any department recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The police department reviewed the application, and as a result of that review, they recommend approval of the transfer request. We also had favorable response. responses from the Building Inspector and the Board of Health. Also, Town Council had suggested a number of issues to be addressed, which I did address through the Building Inspector and the Police Department, as well as through correspondence with Mr. Father Gill. And I think he's mentioned some of those now, where we asked him to provide specific information relative to the relative, relevant business experience, whether there had been appropriate alcohol sales training certification tips or similar, and we just received that information from him. He's also indicated to us in response to the staffing information, he's provided us with the appropriate staffing information. It's indicated the youngest prospective employee would be 21 or older, and that both of the, either one or the other of the owners would always be on-site. He did address our question about planned hours of operation, indicating that it would be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 on Friday and Saturdays, and 12:00 noon until 6:00 p.m. on Sundays, and also provided us with the appropriate insurance certificates. So the departments are satisfied.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motion from the board?
I see nothing that would block or prevent me from voting in the affirmative. I'm just curious, do you anticipate it to have any operational changes in the way that the store will be run, or will be kind of sort of business as usual, what we've come to expect from that?
Same, same.
Same, me.
Very well. That said, I would approve to, I would vote to, I would move to approve the transfer of license to, to the applicants.
Motion made second. All in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Continue all the communications.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is just copies of correspondence to the Legislative Delegation regarding House Bill 3438, which was the bill that was named the Public Lands Preservation Act. I did write back to Senator Tarr and Representative Murphy and Representative Vesely, thanking all, specifically thanking Representative Murphy and Representative Vesely for their indication of support for the board's unanimous position, which was their opposition to the legislation, and also wrote to Senator Tarr, expressing appreciation on the board's behalf for his prompt response to the inquiry, and advising him that the board reiterates its unanimous and strong opposition to the legislation based on it being an unwarranted and unnecessary intrusion on the sovereignty of local government. I'm not aware of whether or not there's been any action on this bill yet. I will say to the credit of Senator Tarr's office, we've exchanged some telephone calls, and I don't have a, a final status of the bill, but I certainly will get that. I wanted to provide you with a copy of a letter that was sent to me from Vincent Cameron, the General Manager of RMLD, indicating that RMLD recently filed a revised streetlight rates with the Department of Public Utilities for the state to be effective for August 1st. It resulted in a decrease in the annual charge for all streetlights, except for the incandescent streetlights, which increased. The RMLD estimates that the town's streetlight bill for fiscal year 12 will decrease by approximately $60,000. And this estimate is based on the inventory of streetlights presented in the FY 12 fuel charge from fiscal year 12 to fiscal year 11. Also, and more specifically, it is because the town, as you know, requested that there be a change in the type of inventory on streetlights. We directed the Redding Municipal Light Department to replace existing incandescent lamps, of which there were 330 to 50-watt high-pressure sodium lights over the next two years. And as a result of that, we expect to receive a substantial savings with no decrease in, in lighting or in service. So that's a little bit of good news if that comes forward. Obviously, we'll want to see by the end of the fiscal year how that pans out, but there is a, an opportunity there to save some money on the streetlight account for, for this current fiscal year.
Did you send a map?
Yeah, a good amount, yes.
Mr. Carr, do you know if, as fixtures, so we're replacing lamps in existing light fixtures?
Yes.
And, and because of the lamp replacements, we have improved efficiency and therefore savings. As fixtures break or require replacement, do we replace the fixtures with even more efficient fixtures that don't require these kind of halide bulbs or whatever?
Yes.
We do. So we're kind of going through that organically as the fixtures go to come out of service. Very well. Thank you.
You're welcome. We just have a letter from the Commonwealth's Division of, Department of Veterans Services, specifically from Coleman Knee, also signed by the Attorney General and the Lieutenant Governor, just reminding us of our compliance responsibilities with regard to communities under Chapter 115, and to ensure that they do in fact have veterans' agents, and that they are managing appropriately. And it does indicate that all cities and towns with a population of 12,000 or more must either appoint a full-time veterans' agent or a full-time director of Veterans Services District if the municipality is a constituent member of a Veterans Services District established under the statute. And they are just writing to all communities, asking them to submit their organization, their plan, and we are in, obviously, in compliance with that. The board has a letter from an organization called Mass Remembers, and this is specifically from the Honorary Host Committee, sending an invitation to attend a statewide commemorative event honoring those who lost their lives, sacrificed, and responded to the tragedy of September 11th, 2001. That is going to be held in Worcester on Sunday, September 11th, at 2:00 p.m. at Institute Park, which is off of Salisbury Street in Worcester. And the public is also invited to attend. Obviously, the chairman just announced that the town would be having its own commemorative service on that date, but we did get this invitation and wanted to pass it on. We have correspondence from the Metropolitan Planning Council and the MBTA Advisory Board that we receive each year. We used to receive that, as you know, in the spring, but they changed the election format on the NPO to the fall. And we have this letter announcing the municipal elections. The Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization, and specifically the important dates. Nomination papers are due on Friday, September 23rd. There would then be a candidate's night in October and the election in October. And they provided you with the election procedures to elect municipal seats to the regional NPO. As you know, it is open to any mayors or chairman of Boards of Selectmen, and this will come back to us, I know, a couple of times, but in case anybody, specifically the chairman, is interested. Otherwise, the chairman is the authorized agent of the town to, to vote in these elections. The board also has an invitation from the Association of Town Finance Committees to attend its 2011 Annual Town Meeting, Annual Meeting, excuse me, which is going to be held on October 15th at the Tri-County Regional High School in Franklin from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The invitation is also obviously extended to the Finance Committee, but this year they're also suggesting that if any member of the Board of Selectmen is willing to attend, that they are welcome to attend. They note that former Governor Michael Decacus is the luncheon speaker. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider taking action consistent with Chapter 87, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Law, as in connection with the failure of the record owner of 276 Lowell Street, which is assessed as Map 72, Parcel 1, to act upon directives of the Town of Wilmington to remove a deceased pine tree on its property, which has been found to present a risk to the safety and welfare of the public passing on and adjacent to Lowell Street and Route 129. I provided you with the background information where we have attempted to contact the owner on a number of occasions, and actually have been in touch with the owner at least twice, acknowledging that he has received a request, which is lawful, to have a tree removed on the property, which we believe clearly endangers the public safety. Unfortunately, we have not received cooperation from the owner, which prompted us to have to call Town Council, who has reviewed the matter, and has indicated that the board should, should adopt the motions that I provided to the board, which would enable them to have the deceased pine tree on that property removed. Specifically, we would ask the Board of Selectmen to direct Superintendent Onosite, in his capacity as Superintendent of Public Works and as Tree Warden for the Town of Wilmington, and his deputies acting under his direction, to remove at the earliest practicable time the pine tree, which is approximately .93 feet from the public way, which tree we have found endangers persons traveling on Lowell Street, Route 129, and the public way adjacent to that street, and where previous notice has been provided to the property. On a further, if the board would direct the Superintendent of Public Works and his agents to promptly, after removing the tree on 276 Lowell Street, to issue and deliver in hand and by certified mail to the record owner of the property, a dated invoice in the amount of all cost incurred by the Town of Wilmington to remove such tree, including costs for any related safety and security measures, specifying the date by which payment of all such costs shall be due. And then I would indicate to you, after that is done, we would take steps to lean the property, which may require a, an action of, of town meeting. So I don't know if the board has any questions on this.
Yeah. Any questions, comments, or motion on this?
Just by way of clarification, the superintendent looking for both motions tonight, or the first, and then with the expectation of taking the other one in two parts?
Would, would like to have both motions tonight, if that's possible. That's the recommendation of council.
And if I interpret these correctly, if these motions are made and voted on this evening, this would authorize the town to go onto this gentleman's private property and remove the tree, and then send him the bill for it? That's effectively what it boils down to.
Due to its deteriorated condition and its public safety hazard, yes, it would.
And the fact that we've made a few efforts, it seems at least, to communicate with him, although I saw that there was a certified mail that was returned as unclaimed, which I'm not entirely sure what unclaimed means. Does that mean?
He didn't pick it up, but we did have, we did have communication with him. That was just another in a step, both before and after that. As a matter of fact, we had communication within this past week, in which he indicated that he would, you know, consider taking the tree down and would be back to us by the end of the week. He did not get back to us.
Okay. So ample opportunities.
Yeah, and it's really, there is some real concern right now that, that something might happen. I think we're, you know, we're, we're in a position where our good luck might run out.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a bit of a catch-22, because I'm concerned about the burden, some costs that this owner, maybe the reason he hasn't had to take him the darn thing down is because he can't afford to have it taken down, and we're going to throw a bill at him after we take it down. But I also certainly don't want to put anyone at risk. So it's a, it's not an easy, it's not an easy hint to go up in approval, but I, I obviously will vote in favor of protecting the town.
Yeah, I would just add, I happen to know the property owner to, to a degree, and haven't, certainly haven't discussed it with him, but I feel compelled to vote in favor of both motions. And, you know, things happen, who knows why, but let's, hopefully, hopefully if nothing else, this action, if the board takes it, would help to resolve the issue one way or another.
Based on the approximate footage from the public way, if we, if we were to approve this motion, could this work order be done pretty expeditiously, because that's less than a foot?
Yes. That's, that's our intention, is to move on this right away.
I see. I mean, it's less than a foot.
Right.
Pretty, pretty tight. That's a, that's a very busy area and highly, highly utilized. So I also know the applicant and have not spoken to him, but I certainly would vote in favor of this bill.
Any other questions, comments, or motion from the board?
I guess in terms of the first requested motion, I'd move that the Board of Selectmen direct the Superintendent of Public Works, Tree Warden of the Town of Wilmington, Donald Onosite, to carry out the action as specifically set forth in the printed motion.
Okay. Motion made second. All in favor? unanimous? Only second motion?
Again, in terms of the, the pre-printed request, I'd move that the Board of Selectmen direct the Superintendent of Public Works and Tree Warden of the Town of Wilmington, Donald Onosite, to take the action as specifically set forth in the second request.
Second.
Okay. Motion made second. All in favor? unanimous also? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, we're asking the board to consider signing the consent and waiver notice regarding the distribution of funds from the estate of Lottie Weisberg and Lena Leiter, their student scholarship funds. Miss, both were former teachers. Miss Leiter pre-deceased, Miss Weisberg, Miss Weisberg, in fact, recently deceased, left a sizable portion of her estate to the Town of Wilmington for the purpose of scholarships. At this point, we believe that's in the amount of $125,000, a very generous donation from a former teacher. We have been going through the process that is required in order to be able to access these funds, and I provided you some of the correspondence between Town Council, in this case Valerie Swett, who's representing us from Deutsch Williams, and counsel for the estate of Miss Weisberg. It has been determined that the appropriate signator is in order for this to really begin moving is in fact the Board of Selectmen. And so I would request that the board sign the consent and waiver notice relative to this, to this donation.
Questions or comments from the board, or motion?
Simple comment is just, I guess I wish to express gratitude to, what's this lady's name? Mrs. Weisberg, and her estate, I guess, her successors, any of those who are listening, as a representative of the town, I say thank you for the generosity, and I would be inclined to say loudly that we would be willing to accept it.
Question is, and I, forgive me, I didn't see it in here, is there any sort of living relative that, that legal counsel is aware of, that if we were to send a letter of gratitude on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the town, that there's someone on the other end that could receive a note of thanks outside of a legal name?
I'm, I'm not aware of it. I do know that the, you know, certainly there has been correspondence to that effect from the town through the superintendent and the principal, but I, I don't know that it went to a particular relative. I believe it went to the estate. We can, we can look at that. I looked at some of the background her requests, and it appears as though her money is going to various charitable organizations.
Okay.
But I, I'm not sure, based upon what we know of her will, as to whether or not there is anybody else involved. We can certainly check.
Thank you.
Any questions, any other questions, comments? Any questions, any other questions, comments, or motion?
I'd move the board to sign the consent and waiver notice as provided by the manager.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider signing the street acceptance plan for ways accepted at the April 30, 2011 Annual Town Meeting. This is Article 20, Leonard Lane and the Mill Road Extension. This is recommended by the engineer who has worked out all of the plans with legal counsel, and this is just a follow-up on the action town meeting. Now, it requires the execution of the board so that these streets can become officially accepted.
And we need a motion on that as well, don't we?
We do, yes.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I make a motion that the board sign the street acceptance plan for ways accepted for the April 20, 2011 Annual Town Meeting, Article 20, Leonard Lane and Mill Road Extension.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I'll pass this on if this could remain in place. There are four tabs that require signatures, and then at the end of the meeting, if we could ask you to just stay a second to sign the my lies as well.
Okay.
Which I have behind me, rather than, it's a little cumbersome. Might be easier if we wait. The board is being asked to consider requesting a change in name on a flammable license from BASF to Curtis Wright Surface Technologies for property located at 201 Ballardville Street. This is a relatively routine change in name, but we did get recommendation from the Fire Department and the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors has no issues that would preclude the proposed name change. Specifically, Chief Bradbury writes that the flammable and combustible license is currently under BASF name, and that they do recommend the transfer under the CMRs. Indicates the fire alarm and sprinkler inspections are current. The radio master box has been installed and is online, reporting directly to the public safety dispatch center. The flammable and combustible storage permit to store and use amounts below the quantities that require these materials to be included in the license is current. The permit for solid waste dumpster is current. All handheld fire extinguishers are inspected and current. The Wilmington Fire Department is in support of the Selectmen's approval of the flammable and combustible license name change. There are no issues on this, but because it's a name change and a current license, it has to, has to be changed.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Per request, I move that the Board of Selectmen change the name of flammable license from BASF to Curtis Wright Surface Technologies for property located at 201 Ballardville Street.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Board is being asked to consider requesting the Wilmington Farmers Market Association for a one-day license to operate on Saturday, September 24, in conjunction with the Wilmington Memorial Library's Community Fair. They would, they indicate that there would be vendors who have attended the market this year that would be willing to participate in the, in this fair. Their current license ends on September 4th is the last date of their license, and therefore the board would have to give them this one-day license in order for them to participate as a farmers market at the Community Health Fair, or the Community Fair.
And it's my understanding also that the library and the community fair people invited the farmers market there to participate that day.
They did.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move that we approve the request as presented and outlined by the manager.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
That concludes the regular business before the board, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Public comments? Mr. McDonald?
Since the last meeting, I've done some research on that emergency issue. Let me just quickly take one and pass it down. And just wanted to follow up on it.
Okay. Four meetings in a row, you can do it right from your seat, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, well, I just have a.
You can do it right from your seat. We've gone through this before, Mr. McDonald.
Says that I've discovered that there are 14 communities, including two located, first of all, the emergency issue is that the people on Endover Street are enduring heavy vibration from blasting.
You brought it up the last meeting. I've asked the town manager if there's anybody, if there's been anybody complaining about the loud blast, or, and we've received any.
We have a selectman that actually lives in the neighborhood, Mr. McCoy. I think he could also attest to the fact that there's heavy vibration caused by blasting. And the seriousness of the issue is that we have 20,000 gallons of fuel at or below the water table beside our drinking water supply. And what I'd like to read into the record is that there are 14 communities, including two, located completely outside the watershed, who receive all or part of their public water supply from the Ipswich River watershed. These communities are Beverly, DeAndrus, Hamilton, Ipswich, Lynn, Lynnfield, Middleton, North Reading, Beavie, Reading, Salem, Toxville, Wyndham, and Wilmington. And as you know, Wilmington is in the MWRA for partial water supply. Our fee just went up to over $400,000 a year. And I'm concerned, not only with our own water supply, but the fact that if we pollute the Ipswich River, we have massive lawsuits from all of these other towns who could possibly lose their water supply.
Okay.
So, I'm making some recommendations.
Okay, I appreciate your concern on that. It's, we've heard you on this before.
The last meeting, Mr. Smaglia, your response was, well, we have detailed officers and permits. That's, that's not the type of response we need.
No, no.
We need a response that says, we're going to shut down the system. We're going to stop fuel, filling those tanks up. We're going to use all our fuel, and we're going to stop the risk beside our welfare.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments here this evening?
Excuse me?
Nothing? Nope, that's good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Thank you.
This was a different matter. This was about the cemetery. Because I.
Mr. McDonald, you, you have requested to be on the agenda, and it was late, you, I just.
It was late.
I responded to you in a letter, and we could take that up at another time. So, I did respond.
This is a financial matter.
Any other public comments?
There's only 7% of the secretary.
All right, you're done, Mr. McDonald. And new business committee reports.
What must be your oath of office?
Okay, Mr. McDonald, thank you. Public, I'm sorry, new business committee reports. Great, thanks.
All set?
Mr. Shempel?
I have nothing today.
Okay.
I know, right? I'm serious.
All right. Important dates.
Would remind the board that there is a High School Building Committee meeting at the Town Hall on Thursday, August 18, in Room 9, at 6:30 p.m. The Rotary Club will be hosting something called Friday Night at the Movies at Rotary Park, which is.
Excuse me, Mr. McDonald, you have something to say?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. No, did you, did you just say something to me, Mr. McDonald?
I'd like to, I'd like to repeat something.
No, no, we've gone through that. You've contacted the town manager's office and Board of Selectmen.
Could you tell me when I will be put on the agenda relative to this issue?
Don't know, Mr. McDonald. I did, just responded that.
It sounds like you're jerking me around.
Mr. McDonald.
Actually, it sounds like you're jerking the town around.
Please, Mr. McDonald, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Carr.
Actually, it's Family Night at the Movies on Tuesday, August 23, at 7:30 p.m. The Rotary Club is inviting families to come down for a free movie. The movie is going to be ET. It's a family movie. It'll be presented right there at Rotary Park. You can sit on the grass or bring your lawn chairs, and we appreciate the generosity of the Rotary Department, of the Rotary Club who's sponsoring this particular event. Remind folks that schools open August 30 for grades 1 through 12, and then on September 6 is the first day of kidney gout. The town offices will be closed on Labor Day, September 5. Brush drop-off continues on Old Main Street Recycling Center September 7 and September 10 during the day, both, on both those days. The library will resume its Saturday schedule, where the library will become open on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each Saturday. A reminder again of the 10th anniversary commemorative ceremony for September 11. We'll have more information on that, and the Board of Selectmen next meets on September 12.
Okay, thank you. Entertainer motion returned back to executive session, not to return to open session. So moved. Second. Voice phone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Unanimous.